New grad coda, awesome. Congratulations Sheri.
Thank you.
Have you found, have you found a first job yet? Are you still looking?
No, I'm still looking. So I'm kind of bummed out that it's taking a little while. I mean, it's only been three weeks, but still.
Feels like longer, I'm sure.
Yeah, just because, you know, kind of the catch 22, they're looking for somebody, most places that they want somebody with at least a year experience, but I'm a new grad, so I need to get my experience.
Right.
So, yeah.
And has productivity come up in your search?
In my coursework, it's come up.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So, so I was curious, I liked the case study, what it had to say. And so, yeah, I just kind of wanted to hear all about that.
Awesome. Thanks for being here. And I know, just reading some of the names here, there's all different types of experience, different perspectives. So I hope that people kind of jump in and share that, especially for people like you Sheri who are new. I think this is such an important topic and one that we need to continue to keep talking about because especially for new grads, you kind of get sucked into this system and it's like taken for granted that 90% productivity is somehow ethical and doable, and it's completely not. And so I just launched a survey to kind of get us started, just so we can get to know whoever's here. So the first question is, is your productivity measured? If your productivity is measured, what is your expected and required productivity? Is your facility nonprofit or for profit? And is your facility locally owned? So is like HR and everybody in the same state where the facility is, or is it non-locally owned? Sure, there's a better way to ask that, but is it owned by a different corporation in a different state? So if you want to fill that out. And we have a lot, we have kind of an outline of this discussion. So there's three of us that are facilitating, and I'll let the other two introduce themselves shortly. But if at any point, like if you came here today and you're like, gosh, like there was something about the description or something about the vibe of this, and you really want to be able to talk about something, like make sure you raise your hand or put in the chat box that you want to say something. And if I miss it, just like interrupt me because I really want this to be a time that's valuable for everybody here. So we have two guests that are going to be facilitating with me today, and it'll be Shelby and Ashley. Hi. So Shelby, do you want to go first? I invited you here because I, like, I've always been, for whatever reason, I don't know where this came from for me, but I've always been skeptical of unions or like the idea of a union, or I've felt like, like this problem seems like it needs to be resolved legislatively or something. But I know in our conversations, you've really opened my mind quite a bit, and I've been really curious about your experience and your perspective with unions. So that's why I invited you here. So thank you for being here. And can you just tell us a little bit about yourself?
You say me or Ashley, there's a little glitch when you said the name.
Oh, you Shelby.
Hi, everybody. I'm Shelby Midbo, and I'm a speech language pathologist. I do work primarily in the school district, which is how I have connection with the union. But I also do work PRN in skilled nursing facility setting. So I was the president of my union for two years and co-president for the last two years. So I just, I would never work in a school without a union, and I've often wondered how other places survive without unions. Because in my opinion, they really make a very, they give workers a lot more empowerment with their employers. And so I just think it's really a good thing.
Awesome. Thank you. And then we have Ashley Carney here, who's with us as well. And Ashley, I invited you to talk with us because you are a nurse and you are a union member. And I've always been fascinated by how much power nurses have to push back on these for-profit systems. And it feels like nursing is just light years ahead of therapy. I don't still really understand how therapy has become so removed from the allied health union movement for so long. So yeah, just glad to have you here to talk about your perspective as a healthcare worker who is a part of a union. And just so everybody knows, we're going to keep everything pretty vague as far as, you know, where we are and where we work. But yeah, you could just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about you.
Sure. So my name's Ashley. I am a registered nurse. I actually started out in a hospital in a state that was right to work and no unions allowed. And five years ago, we moved to an area where there is a very strong nurses' union. So I've seen both sides of the coin. I've seen kind of the perceptions that people have of people in a union versus actually being in a union. And I would strongly say that being in a union, it gives you a collective voice. And especially as all of these businesses are getting more corporate, hospitals are not nearly like they were as far as community, things are turning to a lot more for-profit. So the collective bargaining of a union provides a lot of protection. And I think that's where the strength of nursing comes from, because I do know where I worked before. We were told what we were going to do, and that's what you were going to do if you wanted to have a job. So having the ability to really bargain and say, that's not what we agreed to, that's not what our job is going to entail, and here's why this is what's best for everybody. And being able to at least have a voice at the table, it's not always going to go in the direction that every member wants, but you have the ability to fall back on that instead of just being told, if you don't like it, look for different employment. So it definitely has switched the way that work has worked for me. I was a little skeptical at first because I'm PRN or I'm TPD. So when you're looking at those dues, you're thinking, is, is this something that is going to be worthwhile? And I can tell you that for what the union has done for us, it's worthwhile 100 times over. It's been night and day difference working in healthcare and having the backup of a union.
Awesome. Okay, so you have the three of us at your disposal, those of you who are here. So I'm going to read this case study out loud so that people who are watching the recorded version later on can know kind of what the heck we're talking about. All of these case study sessions are fictional, but just kind of meant to spark the conversation. So this case study session is about Sarah. Sarah is a new clinician and just started her first job at a skilled nursing facility with an attached post-acute care wing. She is thrilled to have this job and excited to begin her new career in rehabilitation therapy. The first few months went really well as she got trained and acclimated to her job, but now she is facing increasing pressure to meet a productivity requirement of 90%. As each week passes, she feels less and less capable of her job because her manager is writing down her productivity percentage on a sticky note and leaving it on her desk each morning. Throughout the day, she struggles to find ways to increase her productivity. She finds that the only feasible way to do this is to fudge the numbers of minutes that she is spending with patients by billing for time she spends looking for them. This makes her feel slimy, but she doesn't know how else to achieve 90% without clocking out for bathroom breaks and paperwork sessions. All of the other clinicians seem to be able to achieve it, so why can't she? After a few months, she starts to dread going into work. Seeing the sticky note at her desk each morning makes her feel frustrated, resentful, and unappreciated. Fudging her billable minutes makes her feel like a fraud, and she starts to notice other slides and ethical decision-making, such as ignoring an urgent call late or telling a family she doesn't have time to talk with them because she knows she can't bill for that time. She is starting to wonder if she made a mistake with this career choice. After work, she is turning to more and more coping strategies, including drinking more than she ever has each night, binge-watching TV and venting about her job to whoever will listen. She does not feel that it's safe to bring up the topic of productivity with her boss because anyone else who has tried to be so only has stories of how badly the conversation went. She feels stuck, ashamed, and burnt out. All right. So, I mean, I think the first thing to maybe at least put a lens on all this is to talk about productivity and where it came from. And I would be curious to hear from anybody here who has more experience than I do. But it, it seems like just from talking to different people and trying to understand what's happened, that productivity has been around for maybe a couple decades, but really it's been the last five or 10 years that that number has become so important to employers. And the only way that I can figure out like why it's become such an important number is because it's just very, very easy to put into a spreadsheet. So we have an employee that has an hourly rate, and then we have their average billable rate. So even if you're billing for different things, especially within therapy, that's a small number of billing codes that they're using. And then they can basically figure out pretty quickly how much profit they're going to make off of that employee. And so as therapy contracts are getting kind of bought out and a lot more removed by these larger corporations who no longer are as interested in patient care or quality of job for their employees, productivity has stuck around as a very quick and easy calculation for profit margin. And really like when you, if anyone worked during the rug season, where we had like medium and high and ultra-high and all those different rug levels were pushing for seen for a certain number of minutes. Then they could even more, they could even better kind of predict the profit that they were going to make. And then they completely pulled the rug out of the rug system, just came up with that one, and removed it because basically there was so much fraud going on. And anyone working in a facility at that time knows how much pressure was on therapists to see patients at an ultra-high level. And unless they were dying or like absolutely refused therapy, you had to get those minutes. So Centers for Medicare and Medicaid were like, all right, we're doing away with minutes because this system has been so manipulated for profit. And so now we have the patient-driven payment model, which creates kind of these buckets of reimbursement rates for different patients based on a lot of different criteria, not just how many minutes they're seeing in therapy. But then that seems to have created a situation where if the minutes don't matter, then we're going to just assign 15 minutes to a patient or 30 minutes. And productivity still exists because again, it's just a very easy way to measure profit margin on an employee basis. So does anyone want to talk about or share any experience as far as, you know, did anyone here work before the rug level system and what that was like? Or what the switch to PDPM has been like for you?
Hi. Hi. I am a newer speech therapist, but I worked for like my first year after my CF, I was in a skilled nursing facility. And it had just swapped to PDPM. So I was kind of part of the whole like chaos of the company figuring out what to do and whatnot. My experience is that they were slashing our minutes and basically trying to jam pack like 12 patients into an eight-hour day. Then of course with, and it's like a whole, I don't work for that job anymore, and this is a big reason why. And something that happened with me is I was being referred for cognitive treatment with patients who were there like maybe for a hip replacement or something like that. OT would do the slums. It would flag then for me to go do a cognitive evaluation. So I was doing, you know, a whole standardized test, like I'd usually do the scan or something along those lines that took a while. So I would bill for the minute that it took for me to do that whole complete assessment. I then got so much pushback that I was spending too many minutes on evaluations, and I needed to figure out a way to cut those minutes. So I pushed back saying I couldn't, that for me to do the assessment that's required and to bill appropriately, this is the time it takes. Then I got a lot of pushback that I needed to not be doing a complete assessment. I should only be billing for speech and language and doing a specific screener that they said I have to do the specific screener every single time I'm referred for a patient. So of course, I argued that that's not, you know, I'm hired for clinical decision-making, and if that's not the appropriate thing for that patient, not going to do it. It then turned into them saying I needed coaching in my job, and I had to do weekly meetings with admin of their compliance officer, tearing apart all of my reports and basically saying that because I'm a new grad, I didn't know what I was doing. I then got Asha, like I reached out to them, got all sorts of resources. Compliance officer did not care. So you guys, that's why I'm in this meeting because I'm kind of curious to know like, what could I have done different? Or I think about if I was in a union, the importance of maybe even having like a union rep in those meetings with me and how different those would have gone because I really feel like I was, I was bullied and I ended up quitting. So it's like, this isn't why I'm a speech therapist. So long story, but really ultimately slashing minutes, being pigeonholed into what kind of assessments I was allowed to do for them to try to slash my minutes more. And that's my story.
Thank you for sharing. And kudos to you for leaving that situation. That's really sad for them. And it sounds like you're not alone. And you know, if you feel like you would like to share, I'm sure that other people would benefit from hearing your story along with tailors. And I feel like it's definitely the new grads that get targeted and gaslit about your skills. And it's usually the new grads that have the best perspective and the highest level of patient care because you haven't been burned out by the system. But Shelby, could you talk about, like, we've talked about this, and this is what I found so fascinating, is how unions work? Because in my mind, they're like this big national thing, like it's big to do and it's hard to, the communication is difficult. It's hard to actually make anything happen. But I'm learning that these are way more grassroots and local in their functionality. So could you kind of paint a picture for us of what could have been different? If there was a union in place and from a union representative point of view, how that would work?
So as far as the, I can tell you about the union that I belong to. So there is a national level, there's a state level, there's district levels, and then we're all local levels. And Ashley belongs to the same state-level union that I do. We're both housed under the Public Employees System Union. And so the way that it goes with us at the, at the local level anyways, we have officers that are elected to represent the membership. And then those officers have conversations with the administration, and that looks like collective bargaining, which happens in, in my setting, it happens every other year. And we look at what has been established as far as what's been talked about in the past. And both sides bring to the table, you know, things that don't really work great for them. Or in our administration's case, it's things that don't really work well for the lawyer. And then they say, how could we improve on this? In the past, we had sit-down, we bring our issues, they bring their issues. We kind of say, these are our priorities, or these are things that we're not going to talk about. In the last negotiation that I was a part of, it was called interest-based bargaining, and we actually had someone there who was a negotiator in case things got messy. But we had ground rules, and it was really interesting because we started off with, the issue had a name. And then we both presented our, I can't remember the exact words, our interest is the word. We would write what our interest was about that issue. And then we would tell the story, which made it really interesting and easy to negotiate because we provided the background on why this does work for us or why it doesn't work for us. And then administration would fill in their same part. And then in that way, we came to this understanding about some things that we both misunderstood about what was, you know, what was actually in form that made things confusing. And so that negotiations process can be really ugly, or it can go really smoothly. But in any case, both sides are presenting things that they would like to work for them and things that didn't work. And I know Ashley has experience where it didn't go as smoothly. But at the same time, the workers' rights were respected and upheld. And so I think that that's, both sides get to come to the table, and that's an important part. It's not just the workers saying this is what's going to happen. That's not how it is at all. It's negotiations. And that's what makes the agreements.
And then Ashley, you and I had talked about, because I think part of, and just I'm reading the comments about like, this is a familiar story to a lot of people, but there is no union available. And I think that's another thing that like trips me up sometimes is like, how do you even start a union? And I know people feel like there has to be this big collective walkout, and everybody has to promise to stop working for a while. And then these companies just, you know, pay people hundreds of dollars an hour to come in and fill that time to fight against the union being established. But can you just talk about like what you know about how unions, particularly in the medical realm, can get started and what resources are maybe available for people to look into?
I mean, I can speak a little bit to it. I think Shelby maybe might be a better representative to that a little bit. But I know, so obviously like employers, employers get a little bit nervous about unions. A lot of times they work very well together, right? Yeah, we'll say just a little, but it's definitely, there have been hospitals in this.
Say like, I may not be employable after hosting this conversation.
So I mean, the one thing I will say is definitely know what your rights are, definitely know, don't, be very careful as far as when you're at work. Or because even once a union is established, there's ground rules, right? Of, of what is acceptable at work and what is not acceptable at work. Meetings, a lot of times for our groups are done, obviously off-campus and with no pay. You know, it's not going to be reimbursed by your, so this is looking at something that is separate for your profession than it is from your employment. So people's commitment is a huge piece of this because you have to have strength in numbers, and you have to have the participation, but you have to be willing to follow a set of appropriate, respectful, professional rules to be participating. So as far as starting one, that would be something I would defer more to Shelby or somebody a little bit higher up because I was fortunate that the nurses' union here was well-established. The one thing to definitely know is, once you start one or attempt to start one, there has been some very questionable behavior practices from corporations that don't want it started because they feel that it's a threat to them. Because instead of working together with the employees, they feel that they're going to be told exactly what is going to happen. And all of it is collaboration. Like as nurses, we, we have the same contract that they have that we're agreeing on. So every three years, they come together and bargain. It doesn't always go well. Our last session did not go well. But in the end, came to an agreement that we will follow the same ground rules that the hospital will follow. It is clear, it is written out, and both sides are agreeing to that. So it's not that the employees can just say, this is what we're saying, period. Everybody has to come to an agreement. But in, in starting one, the biggest thing I feel like would be holding firm. You know, I know that there was a hospital that nurses opted out of because they were given very substantial bonuses to not participate in the activity when they were trying to establish a union for their employees. So commitment is huge, collaboration is huge. And initially, you know, just, just making sure that you realize it's an agreement that you come to with your employer, but you are a separate entity from them. And you have to be a collaborative voice and making sure that you're really looking at the best for everyone in the group because it is, it is about compromise on all sides and making the best solution for everyone involved. And that includes your employer. It includes everybody that is part of it. So.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. And I don't think any of us is here because we don't think, I mean, obviously, if they're a for-profit company, they're going to, they need to make a profit. Like nobody's denying that or like demanding that everybody switch to nonprofit, although some people might think that like, absolutely, both sides need to win. And just to reiterate, I, it does seem like therapists just have no power. So I do want to invite, does anybody else who's present here want to share your story?
It's kind of one of those things where it's like, maybe you feel like nobody else has been dealing with this or you're the only one, and I think it's nice to know that other people are going through the same thing.
Hi Megan.
Hi Nicole.
Can you hear me? Okay. Um, so my, for me, the reason I wanted to join this, it's I've never had like a call into the office, and the DORs I've had are great where, you know, they've never told us to come minutes or, you know, anything like that. But what happens is you can kind of tell like when the company is maybe not doing so great because corporate shows up and we have to go through the meeting of, these are the productivity standards. You're not meeting them, like here's a list of your productivity. These are all the things you can't do, like you can't have a patient on the clock if you're not within line of sight. You can't run and get a washcloth. You can't run and get a glass of water. You can't do these things. But we want your productivity at 80%, at least minimum. So for us, when we try to give that pushback of, well, we have a list of what we can't do, and when things pop up, if we have to talk to the nurses, if we have to change a diet, if we have to talk to family and the patient's not there, all these things we can't bill for, it's hard to consistently have our productivity at 80% or above. But it feels like you, it's hard to direct the conversation with, with corporate when they come in. It's just figure it out and do it. And or it'll be this pushback of like, keep your productivity up. But at these other facilities, we've just had to fire three people for being unethical, so don't be unethical. And it's this constant battle of like, well, we want to be ethical therapists, but, but you want our productivity at something so high. And I just don't know how to like direct conversations when it is like, you know, corporate shows up and it's like, oh Nicole, your productivity's been kind of low. And I'm like, well, I've had to change diets, people are going NPO, you know, I'm implementing FMP. So I'm doing, you know, caregiver education. And I try to give my list, and then it feels more like, don't make excuses, just get your productivity up. So I'm just kind of wondering if maybe there's some helpful options of how I can like better direct the conversation?
Yeah. Wow. I feel like therapists are put between such a rock and a hard place. And it's, I've never seen another business, I mean, maybe that's not true. Maybe I shouldn't say that. But it is odd to me that the profit fluctuation is such that the first knee-jerk reaction is to like squeeze more productivity out. Like that's never made budgetary sense to me. Like for any company that's for-profit, like you need a steady cash flow. And if the cash flow is like so up and down like that, and you're really depending on therapists to bill so many minutes in order to maintain the cash flow, like that just makes not, it just doesn't click with me on a business level. Like it seems like they would have a more robust business plan in place. It doesn't really address your question. To your point about the fact that, like, how do you have those conversations? Or how do you, like, what can you say so that you're heard? To your point about the fact that, like, how do you have those conversations or how do you, like, what can you say so that you're heard? This is where I'm starting to get to the point where I've heard enough of these stories and I've been in enough of these conversations. That I don't think there is a way to be heard unless there's a different power dynamic. And I guess that's where unions come in. And then when people are having these conversations of negotiating, it's people like Shelby who have been. Trained and who know exactly what those sticking points are. Where things can begin to shift and change for the better, but I don't, I don't know if there's a way. Right now, as things are, to be able to sit and have a conversation with a group from corporate. How, I mean, I think anything over sixty percent is not really ethical or doable. You start to do the math. And what therapists are expected to do as far as all the paperwork and talking with families and finding patients. And problem solving and getting pulled aside by social workers and dietary and kitchen staff to have these, you know, four or five minutes. Add up throughout the day. So. The only other thing that I can think of is. You as a facility, even if you're not you, like going to this level of unionizing, but you can get. Everybody together across all three disciplines and really talk about what it is that you think is doable and not doable. And what are like the specific things that you need for support in order to try to, they're asking you to do. Then you might have a better conversation with a corporate represent representative group. Because you're coming across as a cohesive group, the power dynamic shifts a little bit more naturally there, because everybody in that room. The therapist is on the same page and have had a separate conversation about what that page is. And if you could be really concrete and specific about the problems within that building that are making it impossible to reach. The expectations that they're setting for you, maybe they really would. Listen, I doubt it, but maybe if it wasn't like, oh, speech is upset about this, or Sally's upset about this, or Tom's upset about this, but if it was like. Whoa, everybody in this room is clearly stating that X, Y, Z is a problem and we need to do A, B, C to fix it. Maybe something might shift. But it is a lot of gaslighting. Sorry, I'm just reading what Taylor. Wrote. When ended up telling you that interdisciplinary collaboration, calling the MB and chart reviews were a waste of time. Which is just, it's just crazy, like that's part of the job and you can't do your job without doing those things. So it's up to. Them as a corporation to figure out how to compensate you for your time beyond just what's a billable minute. Like that's their problem, it's not our problem. But what is our problem is making it very clear to them. That it's not okay, like this productivity thing is not okay. I'm telling people that, you know, collaborating with doctors is not okay. Feel like they see us as a disposable workforce. Absolutely. And I think that's also why. I feel like we're in like this. Is that a catch twenty two? Like. Everybody is feeling the need for a union or something like it, but it's like to start one feels absolutely impossible. But that's where like, I know that there are national organizations, especially with nurses. That are responsible for creating these local chapters and maybe like reaching out to the local chapter of your. Medical union, um, even if they've never represented a therapist or a therapy group before. Maybe that would just be opening the conversation for how to even get that started. Sorry, I'm reading Jessica. Jessica, do you wanna share this on video for us? Cause I think that would be super helpful with your perspective.
Yeah, sure.
DORs are under, I mean, we think as therapists, there's a lot of pressure. I cannot imagine as a DOR, the pressure that you guys are under.
Yeah, it's definitely a lot, cause I think I spend most of my day telling my boss why people are unproductive and. Ways we're gonna fix it and, you know, what the options are. And I, you know, right now I have. A team, you know, we're in a smaller building now, but I've worked in both a smaller building as a DOR, which things run much more smoothly. Uh, and then I've worked in a hundred and sixty-five bed facilities that things do not run smoothly. But it's, it is so crazy how. The margins are so small, like when you really look at the budget. The only reason a company like, you know, Genesis or something large like that works is because. They have a lot of buildings making marginal budget, you know, a, a very small profit, you know, in the few thousands. And that adds up. And so it's able to like work. But it is crazy that once people start dropping below, you know, like seventy-five percent and all that stuff, it's, it's ends up as a negative. And so it's this really hard struggle of paying people enough that they wanna work there, but also. Making the profit, but so I completely, and I, you know, as a, that's why I went into DOR though, because. I was like, I literally can't be at eighty plus percentage and call families and change diets and do this and do that. So like, I wanted some of that downtime, but you're right, it is a, it's, it's hard to be in the middle. Like it, you're kind of in a rock and a hard place, because you understand everything that the therapists are saying, like yes, like. Wifi goes out all the time, all of these different things that you kind of can't control, no matter how much you want to. And the only answers they really give you are. We'll do more groups, do concurrent, you know, just all these kind of unhelpful things. So, yeah, I don't know, it's hard, it's hard to advocate, but I think what I've tried to do is I. Try to make things as efficient as possible. So we went from doing a lot of like paper-based. Uh, you know, diet changes to now everyone can access the diet changes on their iPads with the patient as they're talking to them. And it makes it billable, which is great, but you know, it's not always realistic for someone who's end-stage dementia. So it's definitely a balance. And it's tough, but I like, I like the thought of a union. I've, I've never considered it, but it might be. Something to look into.
Yeah. Well, thank you for all that you do. It sounds like you really do listen. And I'm, I'm gonna. Go way out on a limb and call a little bit BS on the profit margin be- because. I've done, like, I would love it if an investigative journalist, like, followed dollar per dollar where a Medicare dollar went. And I think it's very easy for these corporations to have a budget for a facility. And for that budget to represent or reflect a certain profit. I mean, this is business. In the United States, one O one is like, how do you show the least amount of profit to pay the least amount of taxes, right? I do not believe for a second that there is not billions of dollars being made and going somewhere. But there's no transparency and there's no rules or laws or legislation that requires healthcare. Companies that I know of to disclose the actual amount of profit that they're making. They have to disclose revenue, but that's not profit. And they don't have to disclose what they're paying. You know, the top people, which could be millions of dollars. And so where, I guess. I understand to a certain extent that yes, these facilities have limited budgets and limited profit margins. And I've heard that a lot, but I also don't understand how these companies are being sold for millions or billions of dollars. And why they're such a hot commodity in the portfolio investment companies and the real estate investment companies. Why are they so interested in buying these facilities and buying companies that buy out contracts? Unless there's a pretty reasonable profit margin to be had somewhere. And I just don't think that there's enough transparency right now within the business world of the United States to really know what's actually happening.
Absolutely. I also wanna clarify that, uh, when I'm talking about profits, I'm only looking at rehab. The nursing homes themselves make bank. They make a lot of money, cause they, you know, especially in PDPM world, like nursing is really driving the bus on this. So, yeah, they make a lot of money, but if you break down just like a therapy staff, one, you know, one month you can lose. You know, three thousand dollars and next month you're making twelve thousand. So it's like a huge like up and down. And I've actually worked in buildings before where. Every single med B patient we saw, we lost money. And so it's like, it's just, it's so crazy. And it's all dependent on the contract that the, that rehab staff has in that building. So I worked in a building where. Every single minute, no matter if it was unproductive or productive, we got paid that time plus fifteen percent on top of it. So we always were making money. And then the one I'm in now is, is a percentage. So it, yeah, it's completely, it's so dependent. But the, the, the nursing homes themselves, they make, you know, in the hundreds of thousands a month, sometimes if they, you know, if they do it right, of course. But it, it's insane. Rehab gets kind of like the short end of the stick on the contracts in some way. In most places, but not everywhere.
Ah, that's so interesting. And it makes me wonder if like part of the complexity of the union puzzle for therapists is. We, we often don't work for the facilities where we're working. And so to have a union, you would then be. Interfacing with somebody, like a company that has the contract. But they're not necessarily the facility. And I don't know Shelby or Ashley, if you have any thoughts on like, if that would make a difference at all?
Wonder that in the past, because I know that the skilled nursing facility where I work is not locally managed. And so I'm part of a very large group of therapists in the Pacific Northwest. And. I thought about that and about even the. The structure of the union that I'm in, where we're local and then district and then state, but everything. Is within one state, even at the different levels. There's a national level that we pay dues to that represents all of the, you know, educators. But even nurses are part of one of them that I belong to, but, but with it being an interstate corporation. And belonging to, you know, there's your local workplace, but then how do you deal with that in terms of the entire company? You would almost have to have a national union, which I know there's been some attempts to try and establish. In order to. Make it workable. And I think that that is for sure, one of the challenges that therapists face when. The people that you need to negotiate with are not even in your state, let alone in your building. And then different laws in different states require different. You know, you know, different things. And so I think that there would just be so much to be up on, but. In my estimation, it would still really be worth it to do, to do the work and try and establish it, because my heart, you know, I mean, I've worked enough in a skilled nursing. Facility and just built in for people who are absolutely exhausted and beaten down and are really happy to leave their job for a couple of days of vacation. And I, I think it's. It's time for you guys that are on this call who are working in those situations to, I, I just wish there was a way that you could have some representation.
Yeah. Just reading a comment in rehab most definitely gets the short end of the stick. I recently started at a skilled nursing facility where all departments get paid holidays. Except rehab. And I, I think, and if you wanna come on and clarify, like, again, that's part of the. Complexity and Taylor used the word disjointed, which I think is appropriate, like. And again, I think it's because the contracts are getting bought out and the therapy companies themselves are becoming more and more conglomerated. And so they don't. I mean, they set their own. Rules and, and it does vary by state. And then it's, it ends up being like the facility staff. And then the rehab staff is separate and treated very differently and paid differently with different benefits. Um, we only have about eleven minutes, so I did wanna kind of get through what we said we were gonna talk about. So quickly, I just wanted to bring up. Point of care documentation. If anything that you wanna share about this, that would be great. I just, I think that point of care documentation is often. The first solution presented to therapists to get that productivity number. Because it's like, well, if you're not. Time, then you can, if you're not documenting separately from therapy time, then you can get a lot more done in a day. But I, I don't know, like when I go to the doctor and they're typing on the computer the whole time, it feels really crappy. And it feels like they're not paying attention and feels like I'm just another, you know. Thing going, piece of information going to their computer. Um, it feels kind of violating. And especially as therapists, like we are building, like so much of progress and results from therapy comes from. The rapport that you have with your patients. And if, if we're spending time like typing on a computer. While we're trying to talk with them, which is impossible from a multitasking brain functionality perspective. Then we're not gonna have that same. And so I think like that's one of the first things that could be discussed in any kind of. Union is like, is point of documentation ethical? Should it be required? Should therapists have the right to a certain number of minutes or a number of hours allocated towards paperwork? Time, because without the paperwork, they can't ethically bill for insurance purposes. And so they wouldn't be making any money. So it makes sense to me to build into the business model, not only time with patients, but documentation time that's done in a way. Where you can completely one hundred percent be focused on that and do a good job, so that insurance companies will pay. And reimburse these companies. But is there anything else that anybody wanted to add about point of service documentation? I did promise five things that therapists can do to push back and turn the conversation in a different direction. As well as five ways that leaders can communicate how they value employees beyond a productivity number. So I just want to go through those quickly. And then before we wrap up, like now is absolutely your chance to ask any questions, share any. Stories, vent. I would love to hear from anybody who wants to talk about, like if you could snap your fingers. And change the future, what would that look like? So for people who are in school now or maybe. Kids right now, growing up and maybe someday going to become such a vocational physical therapist. What would that world look like for them if we could just snap our fingers and kind of resolve a lot of these issues that are making. It really hard to stay in this field. Alright, so five things that therapists can do to push back and turn the conversation in a different direction. One is ask about productivity during your job interview. And if you're offered the job, but it has too high of a productivity number, turn it down and be sure to let the employer know exactly why. You're turning it down, so they can start to get some feedback that therapists, especially new grads or people looking for jobs are paying attention to this. And they're not willing to settle for working for a company with a productivity number that's too high. Number two, even if you don't unionize, communicate with fellow clinicians across all kinds of. Still collectively hold a line without a union. Number three is verbalize to your employer how the focus on your productivity number. Impacts your quality of life and your job. Number three is verbalize to your employer how the focus on your productivity number impacts your quality of life and your job. Maybe Jessica, you're thinking like, I hear that all day long, but I think if we like ignore it. And we just kind of keep going with the flow and we don't provide feedback about the negative impact that's having on us. Nothing will ever change. Number four is do not clock in and out or fudge numbers. This makes it seem like these numbers are possible when they really are not possible. Like I said, anything over 60% on a consistent basis, I question the ethics of what's actually going on there. Number five, if at all able, discuss with the employer why they care so much about product, the productivity number. And if, if you are able to have that conversation about why, then maybe as a team, you can offer alternative solutions. That help the company meet their financial goals while also keeping your clinical integrity intact. And that requires a mutually respective or respectful environment, which isn't always possible. Five ways that leaders can communicate how they value employees beyond a productivity number. Number one is to stop using productivity as a way to determine the value of an employee. So making sure that you're finding. Different numbers and different ways to communicate their value. Number two, if at all possible, stop measuring productivity altogether. I know this is possible because I know there are facilities where they do not measure productivity and somehow they make it work. So they have a different business. Model in place that's working for them. Number three is provide consistent feedback to employees that does not use the word productivity. Notice when therapists go above and beyond to make your facility one that everyone is proud to work at. I know a lot of therapists will only get good feedback if they've met that certain number. And all day long, they're doing little things here and there that make it a better facility and that's never noticed or appreciated. Number four, some medical facilities hold the entire team accountable for different. Goals, whatever that is, whether it's productivity or a number of patients or. You know, whatever that is, instead of having that individual be responsible for meeting that, hold the entire team accountable. And if you have the right culture with this, this can create an environment of supporting each other and reaching clearly defined goals that are reasonable. And then number five is support your employees by paying for their. Access to continuing education and therapy resources, often in many other professional fields. In order to do their job, people are given the software or the tools or the resources to do that. And I think along with paperwork time. A budget for resources and continuing education for therapists is really important. And again, that would be something that could be negotiated with a union representative. So. Um, just to wrap up, I'm going to kind of read through the chat box, but I want to leave it. Ben, so if you want to unmute yourself and talk about what you would love to see. Again, this is also just a space where if you want to share your story or connect with others, you can do so.
So I'm obviously not a therapist, I'm a nurse, but having been on the union side of things and not having a union. I really hope, I think the disadvantage. Is the fact that there's so few therapists and such a huge workload per work environment. So that definitely I think plays against, against you guys where it's, I think employers probably don't expect to have people come together. And really verbalize. What's happening and why it's not working. And I think, you know, that's where the collective voice, whether it's forming a union or. All of the therapists for that facility or that company, I think. Reaching out, the more voices you have, the stronger it's going to be. And I know that sometimes it doesn't feel worth it, or it feels like it's expensive or whatever other reason there's preconceived notions for unions. But really, at the end of the day, I feel like it just, it gives you a seat at the table. It doesn't guarantee that you're going to get every result that you want, but it gives you a seat at the table. And I think that's what's missing. Is that clinicians with a hands-on experience, that the ones with the patients, working with the patients. Are missing at a lot of tables and. It's unfortunate to see how that's happening. And I would love to see every therapist have. The ability to have a seat at that table.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and I'm reading some of the comments and. I think one thing that strikes me is how much therapists know or how hard we work to learn. About reimbursement rates. And I just want to throw out there, like, it is not our job to know any of that. It's not our job to track that. It's not our job to be concerned that a person on part A is more deserved. Being of therapy because their reimbursement rate is higher than part B. Like we, we should have nothing to do with that. There should be a curtain between billing and, and the services that we offer. And it's up to the company to figure out how to make that work. And I think like what Ashley's saying is like we, our voices are, are nowhere to be heard. And so we are kind of treated as these cogs in this machine. And you can just watch like every time Medicare changes their rules. It's a scramble to change everything and everybody's lives are affected. And people lose jobs, people gain jobs, people like all this disruption happens. Because these companies are reacting to reimbursement rates and they're reacting to legislation that happens as far as like how Medicare dollars are dispersed. And that should never be on us necessarily, like we are here to see patients, we're here to provide a service. We have a certain skill set that we've worked really hard to learn and sharpen over the years. And it's just, unless we're in private practice and we're trying to like create our own business. Then yes, we need to know about reimbursement rates, but other than that, it shouldn't really matter. And I feel like the crux of this conversation is that we are holding a lot of responsibility for the profit margins of these companies. That we shouldn't necessarily be holding and we're not getting the support that we need to make that happen. And I think we would all, just reading the comments, wish to have a DOR like Jessica. And like you should have people saying like, don't worry about that. That's not your job. Tell me what you need. Those are the conversations that can be really helpful. And then Leah, if you want to hop on before we wrap up. Talking about. Trouble wrapping your head around reimbursement overall with insurances, med A, med B, Medicaid, HMO, is there a guide? Relatively new clinician, I agree, we have to think about this, but want to know why this is all happening. Your old DOR was amazing and never had to think about this. Now you have a new one. So again, like, not our responsibility necessarily to know. What the different rates are for different people, but it is our responsibility to provide really good care. And if we're spending so much time trying to figure out how to provide care within the constraints of. All of these rules and regulations that are built around getting like squeezing as much profit as possible out of each patient. And we're not doing our jobs and we're not advocating for patients like we could, but then I also. Acknowledge and completely understand that on an individual level. We're just not going to get there. Any final words Shelby, as far as. Advice from a union rep?
No, I just think it's been a really interesting conversation and it makes me feel. Happy to see Jessica's comments and the things that she's doing as a DOR. And I think that all of us on here appreciate it and wish that they were more like that. Understanding that DORs are in the middle is I think a, an important thing too, but as far as. Union. I guess just keep on thinking about how to, how we can possibly make it work. And I think it takes all of us. To keep thinking on it and like actively think and have these conversations more frequently. In order to come to the point where it needs to happen or that it can, that it's a possibility.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you both for being here. And just to wrap up, I think if I could snap my fingers, we would go kind of one of two directions. One being where there would be more transparency and accountability around for-profit healthcare. Especially in the United States where companies would have to disclose profit in a way where they can't. Hide it or manipulate it. I don't know if that's even possible. And the second route would be that we do find a way. To collectively come together across all three disciplines. That's something I'm super passionate about. That's why we serve all three disciplines with therapy insights. Cause I think when we stand together and with each other and for each other and we have a voice together. As rehabilitation professionals across the three disciplines, that's where we're going to have the strongest voice and maybe see that change. And whether that looks like a union or something where we're collectively standing up for that, that's what I would like to see in the future. Cause what I'm seeing right now is new therapists getting burned out at about the three year mark. And if you ask them why. It's because of productivity or it's because of some of the, the nature and the construct of how these for-profit. Companies work. So, thank you all for joining us. I'm gonna shut my video and audio off, but I'll leave the chat box open. Until everybody's logged off. So I see some different people connecting with email addresses. If you want to. Just connect with people before we sign off, please do so. Thank you for joining us. We're going to do another one of these case study sessions. I'm hoping the next one talks about bringing in adult protective services. I know that's kind of a tricky topic when people are wards of the state and maybe, maybe don't have a lot of family or friends to help. Figure out their plan of care. Often adult protective services gets involved. And so I just kind of want to talk about what that looks like and how a therapist might reach out to them. So stay tuned for that. If you like the conversations that we're having and you like this interdisciplinary focus and you like this patient centered care focus. Definitely check out everything that we have to offer at therapyinsights.com. We've got. Hundreds of patient education handouts, therapy resources, article summaries, continuing education courses. And we are absolutely 100% here to support you as a therapist and make your job easier. So, thank you everybody for being here. Thank you Shelby. Thank you Ashley. And like I said. I'm just going to turn my camera off and my microphone off, but feel free to use the chat box. Thank you.